Well, it's kind of hard to put a whole bunch of different things up on a sign. That is the problem. And so we have the Cooks Creek parking lot says no overnight parking. And the people across the street occasionally will have more visitors than they can fit in their driveway. And they call us and ask and just let us know that they need to park there. And I let the police department know that not to tow anybody overnight. I do know there's limited parking down near the park, but I don't know how else to to put the signage up that.
That notice of needing the parking, you know, by the by the resident and then notifying the police, that that's good with me. I just want to remain as friendly as we can, but still protect that area.
Well, does a no overnight parking sign cover all those issues? Because I know they park up by Cooks Creek all the time. Like I used to ride around with mom. They're always up there and if they communicate with you, that's fine. But the ones that are in that park, like that's been going on since the park opened. And Carrie sent an email last night about he drives by. So I went down at like four thirty in the morning and there were still seven cars there. So they're all overnighters. So.
They're not all overnighters. So the issue is if we have a concert or something and people are already parked there at limits, how many people can come to the concert? It was the same. So there's two different issues. One is that it limits it and we would have to notify people every time we have an event that they have to move their car out. And that's just not practical for us because we don't know exactly whose cars they are. And the other, like I said, is the whole paver issue and the expense. If it was an asphalted lot or gravel lot, it might be a little bit different, but.
So you just want to put a sign up that says that it doesn't have anything about not being able to stay there overnight. I'm just saying, should we add that to your signage? You know what I mean? Because I don't I don't think they should be parking there unless they let y'all know. But I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying, when you said your idea for the sign, it didn't have no overnight stay part into that. So I didn't know if that was something y'all wanted to add, if that would help.
The proposed sign would be that there'd be no parking if you weren't utilizing the park.
Okay, so that covers everything. That's cool.
And that's not something that we have as an action item. That would be just a town taking care of that.
Unless there's opposition to it, we will.
I think it's a great idea.
Notify all the adjacent property owners and residents and let them know if there ever is an issue to let us know. But otherwise, we'll ask them not to park there.
And we can do just like we did when we started to enforce vehicles parking the correct direction on the roads. The police gave out a number of warnings before we ever started ticketing anybody. So it'd be just a matter of notifying everybody, having to sign up. And then it's probably the same people repeatedly who are parking there. So they would get, you know, the warnings and then they would be aware that they can no longer do that. But I think we do need to give them a period of time to let them know that it is.
Sure. We certainly don't want to ticket or tow anybody. We just want to make sure that our residents who want to utilize the park can do so and that we don't have to replace replace parking lot. All right. Well, I hear a consensus, I think, of us going ahead and putting up signs. Okay.
Yes.
The second issue is the apartment dumpsters. We've had continued issues with one or two apartment dumpsters becoming too full or having large items placed next to them throughout the month. We've been picking up large items almost every week from one of the apartment complexes. And the reason we do that is because people put mattresses or shelving or whatever out there. If we leave it out there and the mattresses fall over, things blow away. There are things that won't fit into the dumpster. We have tried extensively to work with the landlords. The police chief and I had a meeting with them last year. Krista has reached out to some of the landlords numerous times with pictures of the trash and with the large items. So the trash, we are adding a Monday pickup for the one dumpster and and we will monitor that. They'll be picking up twice a week there instead of once a week and hopes that dumpsters don't overflow anymore. One of the problems, though, I think is that kids are coming and putting trash in for their parents and they're not getting them in the dumpster. So we'll continue to monitor that. That apartment complex also has a new property manager, so we'll be working with them. But the real issue is these large items. When somebody moves out of their apartment, they just like leave their sofa or their mattresses right there. We get a lot of complaints at the Westview apartment complex, primarily at the Thompson Inn sign. That apartment complex, for those of you that don't know, are owned by two different people. The Stover side is owned by one group and the Thompson side is is owned by another. So we have been looking at all kinds of solutions. Like I said, we're going to get an extra pickup for the dumpster, but that leaves us with the large item pickup. We have been picking it up at no additional fee. We're still proposing that we do the once a month large item pickup for everybody in town like we've always done. Nothing's going to change there, but I wanted to come back to you and find out what you would like us to start looking into to prepare for next month. So I did poll the other towns in the area. Bridgewater is the only other town that picks up once a month like we do. And instead of charging somebody for an extra pickup, they just have a penalty. If somebody puts stuff out more than forty eight hours, then they get penalized. And that's written, I believe, into their code. Most of the other localities only pick up once or twice a year, spring and fall. And they just tell people they either have to store it or they they have to store it and put out for a large item day or take it to the dump themselves. There is one locality that will pick up for thirty dollars. They'll do a pickup and they do it by dump truck size. And I'm telling you, for thirty dollars, we couldn't pay for landfill fees and the gas to get to landfill. So anyway, you know, if you want us to look at some kind of penalty, then we would have to come up with an ordinance, I believe, for next month. If you would like us to look at a fee structure where we can go do it, we can do that. Or those are about it.
This Lawrence, Mr. Dettig, I just clarify, though, the the apartment complexes, though, they are free to contract for their own bulk pickup if that was an issue, correct?
Yes, they are free to do that. Anybody can call one eight hundred got junk or or any other contractor to come pick up their stuff.
Okay, I just, yeah, just a just a clarification, right? Because I mean, right now, we're providing that built in courtesy, you know, single pickup a month. So but they still have that option if there is a tenant that we're, you know, to leave, you know, in between that timeframe. Okay.
Yeah. So the monthly fees people pay for water, cover or water, water sewer and trash with your water bill, cover the waste management fees. And we do the large item pickup is not done by waste management. It's done by us with our own trucks and crews as a courtesy and one of the extra services that we offer residents. So that has nothing to do with waste management. We take all that to the landfill ourselves. Is there a direction you want us to go on this so we can take some kind of action next month?
Who were you trying to, like, if y'all would penalize somewhere, are you penalizing the people that put it out there or the actual landlord? Because we don't have that problem here with my dad and his his dumpster, stuff like that. But like you're talking about down there by the church?
Yeah.
So if it's just.
The problem is, we can't, we can't penalize the tenants because we don't know who's putting what out. So it falls to the landlords and then the landlords have to figure out a way to encourage their residents to follow the rules. And that's.
It would be the property owner unless we physically saw somebody putting it out violating the order.
Okay, thanks. That's all I just wanted to ask. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And this has been ongoing for a long time, having, you know, lots of mattresses and grills. And there's always things that are sitting out there and we'll pick it up. And then the next day or two days later, there's, you know, a bunch of other stuff that are out there after people move out. I'd like to see a fee schedule of what we could do, you know, if the and you have had conversations with all the landlords pre COVID, correct?
Yes.
And what were their thoughts?
We called a meeting for all the landlords before COVID. We had a meeting here at town hall. But like I said, Krista communicates with these particular landlords numerous times. Like I said, one of them, the gentleman is old and has health issues. So they have a, they just got a new private management company that I do know came by. I suspect they're the ones that came by and picked up some extra trash one day before we got to it. So it might be that we can have that dialogue, but.
But when and you, when you talk to the landlords, they were aware of the situation and didn't have any remedies themselves?
Krista, do you want to answer that?
As a zoning administrator? Yes, they 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 are very frustrated with the entire situation. And I think they are welcoming any help that that we are able to offer them. Lots of times I'll hear that that it's people driving by, putting the trash out or different things. But I've suggested to them that they put up signs and and different things. And there's, there's been no, no progress, Nate, I don't think.
There are big signs on the walls now that say it's for residential only and that cameras are in use, but they haven't gotten cameras because we keep telling them they get us license plate numbers or footage. We could do something with that. I have take, I live just a couple of doors down. I take pictures of people. I take pictures almost every day of the dumpsters, but I I have taken a picture before, sent it to the chief on the weekend. He's run it and found out that, in fact, it is somebody who lives there. It's just that people who live in the back drive their trash around sometimes because it's such a long walk from the back of the apartment complex to the dumpster. So we have no proof that it's other people coming in and dumping stuff. And I'm going to guess the mattresses and bookshelves and stuff are always put on the apartment side of the dumpster, not the street side. So I'm going to guess most of those are apartment people and they're almost always over the weekend that those things show up.
I have a thing. Most, a lot of those people back there are Spanish. Has anybody, when we give out a notice of what's going on, like, is there a Spanish version of it as well? Because like they might not read English, so they don't know what that sign says. You know what I'm saying? Like, a lot of the kids probably already speak English and some of the ones that don't, they listen to their children. But is when the notice goes out, is it going out in English and Spanish? Or is the newsletter going out in both versions? Because I mean, you might could be able to let them know. I mean, I don't know if any of y'all speak Spanish. Mine is horrible. So.
So the issue there, we don't send out, so our our meetings and notices go to the property owner. Like, like the town attorney said, we, that's, that's who's responsible for maintaining their properties. The other issue there is although some people are Spanish speaking, there are several different dialects and ways of speaking. And some people can read and can't read what we write. I have interpreted signs before here at town hall and people still can't read them because they're not either. They don't read Spanish or whatever. So I'm not sure that.
I mean, because I'd be back there if y'all print something up in in Spanish and hand it out to all the the Spanish tenants. Like, just so they know that, hey, put your big trash here on this day. Maybe that'll help the older man because if not, it's going to end up getting him fined. And I I would hate to see that if he's not well and he's trying to fix it. So I just, I didn't know if that was something that you all would think about, maybe letting them know in Spanish that that's, this is when you do this. Because like I didn't even, I have to call Tara every time, when's big trash day? Because I don't even look at stuff. So I mean, I just thought that would be an idea to just make a paper out. I do have Spanish speaking friends that could type up what you say and print it. And I'll go back there and take it if y'all don't. I mean, just to let them know, either way, even with us doing the, you know, making your decision today, that's fine. But that's something that would help them understand our rules. You know what I mean? I don't know if y'all get what I'm trying to say.
Ms. Hall?
Um, my thoughts on that is that we we contact the landlord directly and that the burden of passing that message along to the prop, to the tenants would go to, would fall upon the property owners. But we will certainly do whatever you guys advise us to do. But that's, that's kind of my thought on it.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hall, I wasn't looking for a response from you. I was going to ask a question.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Rogers.
We answered. When Mr. Mayor speaks of fees, that's going to put the pressure on the property owner. And you're saying that the property owners are frustrated. So are we going to, what's that going to do to the property owner? Is it going to create an incentive to get it resolved or is it going to cause more frustration? I mean, what what are we going to do with those fees?
That's a tough one. Yes, and yes, probably. It's probably going to frustrate them a little bit more and it's probably also going to encourage them to enforce it a little bit more. It it does help and I think going forward, it's going to help that both sides now are being managed by a a property management corporation. So I think that's going to help because like Mrs. Lawrence said, the the one side had been managed by an elderly gentleman whose health is failing. So now that it's been turned over to a property manager, I do think that it will improve.
How long have we been under that property manager scenario?
Since October. So it's very recent.
Well, I would agree with the mayor that fees would probably be a good way to approach it as opposed to penalties.
Yeah, I would, I would concur with Mr. Rogers and Mr. Jackson. I I think that that at least gives them some teeth too, because, you know, I mean, let's face it. Most of the time, they could probably target or identify whose items those, you know, those are, whether it's a tenant leaving or, you know, or or getting a furniture or something that they they, you know, especially with a property management firm, they should be able to just kind of zero in. So I mean, that's another, that's a security deposit issue to me. And I think that's so, even if we're imposing a fee, that's just going to, that should, if they're managing it properly, should come out of their tenant's security deposit.
Well, and what we're talking about tonight is just revising the ordinance and making an ordinance so that we can enforce it. And that gives us a legal action to do so if need be. It can still be a judgment call on staff as far as what fees we enforce and how much warning we give them and that type of thing.
And I believe, and I'll let the attorney chime in here, but if it's just a fee, not a penalty, I believe that we can do that by council policy for setting that fee. And that would not be a code issue, would it, Jordan or?
Um, this is not the sort of thing that would necessarily have to be in the code. Sometimes it's helpful to put, and I don't see a big difference between the word fee and penalty. I think those are pretty synonymous the way they're used. So basically, what we're talking about is if if we have an ordinance that says you can't put your bulk trash out except for forty eight hours in advance of the monthly scheduled bulk trash day. And then we find trash on a day other than when it's allowed, the property owner could be assessed with, you know, a certain dollar amount that would be set. And whether that's called a fee or a penalty, I don't think it matters. It doesn't have to go in the town code. It could just be a resolution that's adopted by the council. But it might be helpful to put it in the town code so that a citizen reading the town code would come across that information. I'm happy to answer any questions and you all have about that.
Is that something you can put together for next meeting, Ms. Lawrence?
Um, yes, we can work on that. I can work with the town attorney on that and we can put something together. You're asking for a fee structure. So my thought was we could call the property owner and say there's more large items. If you don't pick them up by tomorrow, we'll charge you thirty dollars and we'll pick them up kind of thing.
Give them the option and then if they don't do it, then we do it. And we have to offset our cost of taking, it's not an inexpensive trip going to the dump between fuel and wear and tear and the dump fees.
Right. And it's not fair to the other residents that are following the rules and paying the same amount as the people in the apartments.
But just to be clear, this is, this is different than the town offering an on-call pickup service for a scheduled price. Yep.
This is just for excess after the update, right?
Yeah, it's still their responsibility to get that stuff out of there. But if not, and right now what's happening is if it's there for a couple of days and we get complaints, we go pick it up. But we're not charging because we don't have the right to charge right now. So this would put in place for us to say, if we have to pick it up, then we're going to have to charge it.
I mean, even if y'all do, I mean, if y'all just do it as a fee and they and the landlords have an issue with it, they can always alter their rent or, like he said, security deposit to cover their fee. So it doesn't end up hurting their pocket and the tenants still end up paying for it. I don't see any problem with it.
Okay, we'll work on that and bring it back next month. And then finally, Mill Street, as I put in my report, we were looking for prices for Mill Street. For what I wrote down. So I need a motion. So I know where it is. It's on my PowerPoint. I knew. So we would like to approve a contract with Viola Engineering. We have, we are required to have a VDOT certified materials tester who writes a QA plan and does a materials list and test the materials. And for those of you that aren't familiar with VDOT, every time something goes on the ground, in the ground and an engineer has to come out and make sure that it's the proper material and it's prepared properly. So this firm would do the quality assurance plan. They would maintain the materials notebook. They would do the required materials testing. We got four quotes. They ranged anywhere from thirty five thousand to a hundred forty five thousand. But the one that was closer to thirty five thousand was not willing to do the QA plan, which is the major component of this, and they were not willing to maintain the materials notebook, which doesn't do us any good. So we called them back and and asked again and they just, they finally agreed to do the QA plan, but not the materials notebook. So we went with the second lowest bidder, which was Viola. Their quote was forty eight thousand one hundred and fifty. This is required to keep the Mill Street project going. But because it is over ten thousand dollars and wasn't spelled out in the budget, I'll need a motion to approve that expense. I would suggest that we approve it not to exceed forty nine thousand nine hundred and ninety nine dollars in case they go a little bit over. It's all an estimate based on how many days they think they will have to be on site any day that VDOTs or that our contractor is putting something down, whether it's concrete, asphalt, gravel. They have to be out there doing the testing and keeping the notebook. So.
That keeps us under our seven hundred thousand dollars that was approved.
Well.
County, copay.
So this expense was not originally, this expense was not originally what Royce put into the contract or in any of the prices that we got. So I'm still working with VDOT in the county to make sure that this could be in part of that overrun budget. But it might be something that we have to eat in the long run, which is another reason I'm bringing it to you.
Yeah, I mean, to to Mr. Rogers' point, I know that this is, you know, it's it's something that's, it's necessary. And as Ms. Lawrence mentioned, it's needed to go through. This is standard procedure for VDOT. It's a shame it was, you know, like I said, it was an oversight on, I think, the engineer's part, but we'll, we'll make, we'll make that work. I I would say this seems to be true to form and I'll be prepared to to make that motion to approve to Viola Engineering PC for an amount not to exceed forty nine thousand nine hundred and ninety nine dollars.
You have a second? Oh, very good, Mr. Rogers. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Hall.
You're on mute, Krista.
Sorry. Ms. Worthy?
Hi.
Ms. Hoover?
Hi.
Mr. Seward?
Hi.
Ms. Estes?
Hi.
Mr. Rogers?
Hi.
Mr. Diejack?
Hi.
And Mayor Jackson?
Hi. Motion passes. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the treasures report with Ms. Smith.
Good evening. You folks received the treasures staff report and budget versus actuals. I really had nothing else to add to this. I sent out some information earlier today as requested. There was a question. Pull it up here. The question was, year to date at twelve thirty one, two thousand nineteen, real estate taxes received and vehicle license in comparative to what was received this December thirty first. And last year was real estate taxes received fifty nine thousand eight oh four, vehicle license forty one thousand one twenty four. And then you can see this year's real estate was fifty nine nine oh seven and vehicle license forty seven six seventy. Other than that, I have nothing else to add unless someone has a question.
Harry, none. We'll move on to Mr. Chief Trout.
Oh, my God, my friend's kid just got COVID.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Everybody has, should have my report. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you, Chief Trout. Moving on to public works with Ms. Lawrence.
Sure. The public works report is on page twenty one. I've updated you on the personnel change. I will say that Lucas is going to be taking his class three water operator test later this month. So hopefully I'll have an update on that for you. I am still waiting for the start date for AJ Counter on the relining project. We have, in the past week or so, I've reached out to VDOT regarding the College Street Sidewalk Project. I've been talking to the staff. And now that Adam's in place, Adam and I will fill out the application and permits that are required to get started on that College Street Sidewalk. We are not planning on replacing the curb and gutter, so it should be just taking it out and putting it back in, but with the correct ramps. But we need to get that permit from VDOT. Any questions on on Public Works?
No, I just say, Ms. Lawrence, thanks again. I think it's exciting news with Adam joining the Public Works side. It's great to keep him on board and for the, for for my incoming, my new colleagues, I would highly encourage you. He's a great resource. He's been helped me, Mr. Rogers, in our transition, taking on with the infrastructure committee. And he gives a great behind the scenes tour of the wastewater, the water treatment plant. So he knows how to make that stuff interesting to even to the layperson. So that's a great, great asset. And and thanks again for your diligence on Mill Street Project. For those of you following the ongoing odyssey, I think we'll all be, I think we're all going to be ready for a celebration in the spring, summer, when that's complete. But thank you very much for moving that forward. It's, that's been no small feat. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diejack. We'll let you just continue on, Ms. Lawrence, with water.
Okay, the water report is on page twenty two. Nothing to update there other than the personnel stuff. We did, it says in here that we started to skate on the elevator tank there. They've gotten a lot of that stuff done. We do need to get an electrician in just to have the electrical make more sense. They've been, I think, spliced and spliced and moved around. So but we're moving along on that project as well.
Any questions for Ms. Lawrence? How about Ms. Hall for community development?
My report is on the last page, page twenty three, and I do not have anything else to add. Happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Rack cards look really good, Krista.
Thank you. We were very pleased with how they turned out.
And they've already started to be distributed?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to committee reports and we'll start with Ms. Worthy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can we add in the attorney? I wanted the attorney to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Have reports, the FOIA and FOIA training coming up or requirements?
Go ahead, Mr. Bowman.
Sorry, Jordan.
Oh, no, that's fine. So I've talked with Ms. Lawrence about presenting to you all at a meeting on January twenty fifth to discuss FOIA. It is a requirement under FOIA that you receive training either from the FOIA Council or from your lawyer, which is me. I understand that many of you know about FOIA and that some of you have recently gotten probably some pretty good training on FOIA. But unfortunately, that training doesn't meet the criteria required by the law because it wasn't the right person giving it. I recognize that that's kind of silly, but in any event, I'll look at the training that some of you have already received and and see what I can do to try to avoid you getting redundant information, but that's scheduled for January twenty fifth. With respect to the Conflict of Interest Act, which is FOIA. With respect to the Conflict of Interest Act, which is COIA, um, which is a different law than, than FOIA, the act requires training, but that training must be given by the Conflict of Interest Act Advisory Council. And they do in-person trainings periodically, but they also have it available on their website. And i- it's required for new council members within two months of taking office. And then after you take your initial training, it's required that you do it, um, during each two-year period subsequently. So once every two years. And, um, you can, you can complete that requirement by going to their website. So I've given Ms. Lawrence a link. I would ask, um, that, for new council members, if you'll take that and, and for current council members, if you haven't had it, that you go online and, and take that and then, um, sort of keep track of when you did it and, and know that you'll need to do it every two years. On the twenty-fifth, if you have questions about that act, I'm happy to answer them and talk about it. But the training that I would give you on it would not bring you into compliance with the statute.
Do you have a time for the twenty-fifth? Because I have to take it. Because I miss BML and everything.
Angela, what time are we, is that meeting slated for?
It's going to be five. We're gonna, we're gonna start at five-thirty and we've got, um, and I don't recall offhand whether Mr. Bowman's going to go first or Mr. Hurtgrove, but we'll start at five-thirty. I believe Mr. Bowman's going first. He doesn't expect to take more than forty-five minutes and then the other half of the training, we'll start after that.
Town office? I mean, at the council building?
Uh, on Zoom.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Bowman? All right, now we'll go back to Ms. Worthy for economic community development.
I have no report.
Thank you very much. Um, I'll speak to the finance committee. We met on January sixth and reviewed the town cash and investments. Uh, we also reviewed the proposed schedule for the upcoming budget cycle. Um, so we, uh, dug into that. Mr., uh, Rogers, I apologize, was, uh, that was his first, um, committee meeting sitting in. He'll chair that next year. So he's kind of getting his feet wet on that and he's going to do a great job as the chair for that. Um, infrastructure and safety committee, Mr. Dijack.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, just, uh, was glad that we, we've been on, uh, in December. Um, un, unfortunately, it sounds like our incoming vice mayor got a better offer here. So unfortunately he will no longer be on with me, but uh, nevertheless, uh, we did conquer a couple, uh, a couple of things. Um, really just going to be working on the CIP coming up here and of course our ongoing projects. And so I welcome, uh, Mr. Seward on board and he and I have spoken and we will look forward to, uh, meeting again shortly.
And we'll move on to Mr. Rogers with Parks, Recreation and Beautification.
No report this month.
Thank you very much. And we'll go to Mr. Dijack again for personnel.
Uh, no report.
Thank you, sir. And, uh, I will speak on the police committee and we did not, um, have a meeting for that either. So we will move on to the mayor and council comments. And you go back to the Mill Street project. This project's been going on since two thousand and eight. And for whatever reason, different councils and different reasons, but the project just never seemed to get itself off the ground and get any momentum going. Um, but I would like to, again, Ms. Lawrence has been, you know, critical in staying on top of, you know, our, everybody involved with this, whether it's VDOT or engineers, i- it has been a, a long process and I, I promise you, she feels like she's been working on this project long before she ever got here. Um, but thank you very much for your diligence and if it weren't for her, we would not be starting construction today. So thank you and your staff for at least getting this project moving and we'll keep pushing it down the road. Um, or, or down the line. We're not going to push it down the road. That's what's happened too many times. Um, I'd also like to recognize the town staff for going the extra mile in two thousand and twenty. Um, it was a year like nobody has ever had and the staff really went out of their way to make some things special, over the holidays especially. Um, you know, we had the national night out parade with the police. We went around town. They had the sirens going. We handed out, uh, candy and cups and koozies and all kinds of stuff to both kids and the adults. Um, we had the decorating of the drive-through for Halloween. We had a hundred and thirty-two kids that came through for that event. That's an event I'd like to see continue on. Anyway, we have that many kids come through. That's great. Um, we had more decorating throughout town. Um, we did, we expanded the, uh, Citizen Christmas decorating contest, which we had a, a lot of people decorated. Not everybody entered the contest, but we had a lot of people that decorated town. It was great. And then we also had, uh, Santa and Miss Claus drove around town and handed out candy on a, uh, quite blustery cold night. Um, so thank you for the staff and the town, the citizens, everybody does recognize and appreciate it for that. Um, now I'd also like to congratulate Ms. Hall for completing the program who's now a certified Board of Zoning Appeals. So congratulations to that. And as Ms. Lawrence said, um, Adam Meek is now going to be our public work supervisor. He's done a great job at the water plant. So look forward to good things for him. And I'd like to hear what other comments other council members have. Wow. Okay, we'll just move right along here. Um, we have no unfinished business this evening. We have no new business this evening. Um, we'll open up the floor, Ms. Hall. I know you have one written public comment. Do we have anybody else that's raised their hand for public comments?
Me, just double check through here. No, sir. I just have the one written that I will read.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, welcome Mayor Jackson and council members. My name is Janet Matthews. I am a resident in the town of Dayton and have been for the last twenty-nine years. I promised to make this short. I'm writing to comment on two items on the agenda for council meeting, January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Item number one, action item number three, be consideration town council code of ethics. Town council members already must comply with extensive state laws that govern the ethical aspects of public service, charter laws pertaining to conflicts of interest responsibilities, along with ordinances and policies. Trying to adopt a comprehensive rule-based ethics code will result in an overlap of complicated laws creating inconsistencies. The town residents of Dayton elect our council to act on our behalf. They are not town employees because we do elect them. We trust them to act for the common good. We elect them for their character, their beliefs, and to ensure that the interests of residents are represented. We elect them to be our voice, to be honest, truthful and above all transparent. The concept of a rule-based code of ethics like they are employees of the town of Dayton will undermine public trust and confidence as opposed to building it up. Item number two, new business apartment dumpsters. Big item pickup has been around many years in the town of Dayton. It's been on the first Tuesday of every month. It is included in our trash billing per month, per residential household. If the town of Dayton is picking up big items more than once during the month, that's on the town of Dayton. Sending a notice reminding residents to put out big items for pickup the day before would be more beneficial than punishing all residents. We are living in an epidemic. Times are tough. Let's do what we can to get through it without punishing people for such minor things when there are so much more important things. Stay safe, wear your mask, wash your hands and thank you for your time, Janet Matthews. And that's all I have for public comment.
Thank you very much, Ms. Matthews. Um, does council have any other questions or comments? I need a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Hey, wait a minute. I got a question. It is not about nothing important. I don't remember the lawyer's name. Can I write you an email with like some of the words and questions and stuff that I don't understand and send it to you?
Yes.
Okay, that's all. Thank you, Carrie.
If you don't have my email address, you can get it from Ms. Lawrence. Um, but you may have it from, I guess, we send you a letter with FOIA, so you might have it from that.
Okay, thank you.
I need a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Rogers, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dijack. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? Meet adjourned.
All right.
Bye, guys. Thank you.
Good night. Thanks, everyone.
Box, guys.
Thanks, everybody.
Hey, Angela.
Take care.
Still on here? Angela? Does she leave? I don't know how to turn it off.